On air, then we'll get started. All right, welcome, everyone. I'm Councilmember Zach Hall, and I'm calling the July 8, 2025 City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee to order at 6:30 PM. I'm joined by Council President Walsh, who's joining us remotely this evening per council rules, and Councilmember Jiang here in council chambers. Quickly to run through the agenda, we'll take public comment at the top of the meeting, approval of the minutes, and then we have COME 0142 Bellevue College Development Agreement Extension Request and COME 0156 Impact and Mitigation Fee Update. And that is our meeting. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. So before I launch into some of our public comment talking points, I will just check to see. I don't see anyone in the public who's, unless you'd like to provide any public comment. Is there anyone online joining us today?
Chair, there's no one online, no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay. No one online joining us. We will have multiple opportunities for public comment tonight. If anyone happens to be watching on YouTube and wants to rush over to WebEx to provide virtual public comment, we will take them after each agenda item, question and answer period. So, and also, of course, anyone listening in, you can email us anytime at citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov about these items or any other items in your interactions with the city. So then we will now move on to approval of the minutes, the June 10, 2025 meeting minutes, which were distributed in advance. So I'll just ask, are there any corrections by the committee or objections to approving by unanimous consent? All right. Then, hearing none, the June 10, 2025 meeting minutes are approved as presented, and we will just keep on moving to the first item of business on our agenda, which is COME 0142 Bellevue College Development Agreement Extension Request. And I'll pass it off to Director Dollywell.
Good evening, councilmembers. So let me quickly share my screen. It goes, it switches to the other one for some reason when I do that. Okay. The three PowerPoints is getting confused. So tonight, we're here to present the request from Bellevue College to get a two-year extension to their existing development agreement with the city. And the direction we're seeking from the council committee is, should this agreement be extended for another two years to allow time for Bellevue College to develop a plan for what we're calling Parcel Four, and I'll get into that a little bit. This was an agreement that's part of a larger WashDOT development agreement. It was approved by council in 2011. It included transfer of development rights from a WashDOT property and Park Point in order to preserve 144 acres of forested land. And so here's a little map. So you, the Park Point, it was about 101 acres, and then there were 43 acres that WashDOT owned. And this particular property that we're talking about tonight is a 19-acre campus that Bellevue College at one point thought of building a satellite campus. This map is part of the development agreement, but it is slightly incorrect. The third, so Parcel One is the one to the south, then there's a middle parcel, and then the top parcel is actually not that far up. That's Parcel D that was recently developed with 10 lots. That was part of the development agreement to transfer affordable housing units with the Westridge Development. But the third parcel that's part of this WashDOT agreement is right next to the parcel number two. And I think I emailed everyone the correct map. We had to go back and trace out where these were because this was not making sense. So back in 2011, Bellevue College purchased this 19-acre parcel in the Highlands neighborhood with a goal of building a satellite campus. The master site plan was approved by council by this resolution that we've attached with your packet as a link, and thought of doing this phased construction of multiple academic buildings. However, there, you know, over the past decade, they've seen enrollment trends changing, online learning, and high cost of having a satellite campus. They're reconsidering the, that, their vision at this location. So the entitlements under the development agreement are also a little bit confusing, and thank you for all asking those questions about how does the math add up or doesn't add up. But there's a concept of ERUs, equivalent residential units, that's throughout these development agreements, and that's based off of how much water planning, how much, you know, other infrastructure development that can go on. And when the whole Highlands development was, agreement was in place, it had the total number, overall number, and then they were divvied up into these different areas. So my sense is that this 310 equivalent residential units came through that concept. However, this, when this development agreement was being contemplated, there's a specific Appendix E that has a section that limits the density to three to 12 dwelling units per acre, which adds up to a maximum of, you know, if you round it up, it's about 229 residential units on this 19-acre lot. So the proposed amendments in front of you are just to get an extension for two years to get, you know, to actually develop a viable plan from Bellevue College's perspective that takes into account community input. And also Bellevue College is committed to compliance with our critical area code and stormwater and other environmental regulations in place at the time of development. Why do, why is this extension needed? Because during these two years, the applicant plans to seek community input, come up with a viable plan for the city to review, and then once, once that's figured out what exactly is, you know, will work and is also fits in with the community, at that point, the city may use different tools to implement that vision. We could just update it in our code, and there's not a development agreement because there's a lot of history that goes with this and nuances that happened to get to this point, the transfer of development rights and whatnot. Or, you know, we could just, you know, change the development agreement maybe with the terms, more in-depth look at the terms of the agreement, and also the timeframe. So those will be options that we'll bring forward to council after Bellevue College does their piece of figuring out what would make sense for them and what they want to do. So our recommendation at this time is to amend the development agreement as it's proposed in your Exhibit B, which is the resolution, so that Bellevue College can evaluate development options, seek community input, and for city staff to evaluate the appropriate underlying zoning. That pretty much concludes my presentation. So depending on the action tonight, we can bring this item for full council action on July 21, either on regular business or on consent, depending on your feedback. Again, the direction we're seeking is, should we extend it for another two years? And that concludes my presentation. We also have the applicant representing Bellevue College, Jorge, who he has a little presentation that I can pull up as well, unless you have questions for me now.
I'll ask the committee, any questions before we move on to the next part of the presentation? Yes, we have one. Councilmember Jiang, go ahead.
So I took a look at the WashDOT development agreement, and it looked, seems to me like the part of the development agreement that expires in 2025 is the development of any non-institutional use, like housing, and then the rest of the development agreement, if they were to, if we were to develop some kind of educational institution, that actually goes through 2040, is that correct?
That is correct. The wording is a little bit, you know, without any action taken, there's some extension. So I assume that would be an administrative decision, but, but you're absolutely right. So the entitlement for residential sunset, but the, the institutional uses can continue till 2040, I believe.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
All right. Unless there's any other questions, feel free to move on to the next part.
All right. So let me pull up your presentation.
I'm Jorge De La Torre, and the Vice President for Administrative Services at Bellevue College. And to give you some context of one of the reasons we want to, we're asking for this extension is, I've been at the college not over, not, not up to a year yet. That's on July 18. I'll be there a year. The president has been there for two years since July 1. So we're new to the college, we're new to the development of this property, and we personally would like time to figure out what's going on. So, as many said, college has the property bought in 2011. Originally, it was going to be an east campus, but as she said, changing higher ed trends prompted the reevaluation of this. We asked for the two-year extension. That extension would start, would go through December 31, 2027, maintaining the current terms. But we want to assure everybody that we're committed to working with the city, working with the neighbors to, to make this, if we develop it, to make it a development that everybody's happy with. We're not, we're not a for-profit that's looking just to put up as many houses and as many, get as much money as we can. We're looking to be partners with the, the city. So we, we use that time for our due diligence. We collaborate and then return by the end of the two-year extension with an updated plan. As we said, what's changed is enrollment has changed. There is a thing called the enrollment cliff, and I know what's happened in Issaquah, is that the high school graduates are starting to come down. And that's come down, and our enrollments have come down at the college. And so what we thought we would need 15 years ago, we don't need anymore. And then also, there's online folks are doing classes online, and it's just not a possibility. Oh, I guess it was the same one there. So again, our proposal is to extend so we can do some due diligence, collaborate with the city and stakeholders, and then return in 2027 with a plan. Any questions?
Yeah. Great. Any questions from the committee? I wonder if you could share for us kind of your vision for what community input would look like?
Yeah, so I've met with the Issaquah Highlands, was it HOA? Yeah. And so met with them. I want to get input from the community, what is best suited there. They actually gave me some pretty good ideas at the time of possible development ideas. But honestly, we are way open to anything. We just know that we're not going to build a satellite campus. And we don't want to sell the land, probably, going through the surplus. If you're a state agency, it's probably not beneficial for the college and might not be beneficial for the community because the, the functionality that would, there would be limited to a couple of things when you're, you put it out to surplus. And that's my understanding anyhow, is that you would have to go for low-density housing and whatnot when, when you put it out to surplus. So if we did that, we'd have to first find another public agency who would get the first right to buy it. And then if we did, no public agency wanted it, the college could sell it to a private buyer only if limited, or if that land was used for public benefit purposes. And so, you know, we just, we'd rather look into it ourselves and develop ourselves. And my own philosophy is, I'm a cash flow person, so for the college, I like to see some ongoing cash flow. Anytime you sell something, you get a big chunk of money, you just kind of use that money up, and it's gone. And so I'd like to see something developed a long time and be partners with the community for a while. But all that aside, we're open to anything, really, at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from the committee members? Council President Walsh, Councilmember Jiang? No? Yeah. All right, no other questions, then? We'll go into public comment again. So this is an opportunity if any members of the public would like to provide testimony on this item that's before us. Has anyone joined us online?
There are no virtual attendees at this time.
No virtual attendees. We do have someone from the audience who's come in. Would you like to provide public comment at all? No? Okay. All right, well, once again, if anyone has any thoughts on this, they can email us at citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. And now we'll move into direction needed from the committee. Is there a particular slide? Or let me see if I can pull up the questions to you. All right, yeah, just easy. Should the development agreement be extended for another two years to allow time for Bellevue College to develop a plan for Parcel Four? So we'll open it up for comments from committee. Who would like to start us off? Council President, I see your hand. Feel free to get us going.
I am happy to get us going.
And just checking in, we did lose you, or at least we lost your video. Let's come back to Council President Walsh unless, oh, you're back. Are you ready to provide comments, Council President?
I'm going to change over my Wi-Fi, so go ahead without me, and I'll come back.
Sounds good. Would you like to start then? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah. Okay, I have a lot of thoughts about this one. I would, first of all, so the whole concept with this parcel to begin with was that it was going to be some kind of, you know, public institutional use that would have community benefit. And go, and I've heard from councilmembers who were on the council at the time that the sale price of the parcel was lower than the market rate at the time. So this parcel was sold for $5.2 million, 19 acres, which comes out to about $274,000 per acre. Very hard to find comparable properties. Earlier today, I went down this rabbit hole, looked at like 100-something similar properties. There's only one that like actually had a similar enough zoning that it could be even considered remotely comparable. So this one was a sale in August 2010, which was five acres for 2.75 million. So there was just $550 per acre, which is about double what we sold the land to Bellevue College for. So just setting that stage of, you know, we gave Bellevue College a good deal on the land with the idea that it would be developed for public benefit. Now, I don't, I'm not someone who's like, oh, market rate housing is terrible, it has no benefit to the public. But if you're going to do market rate housing, then you probably should also pay market rate for the land. And I think one thing that also really irked me about the report was that the entire report from the consultant was very focused on, you know, maximizing revenue for Bellevue College, which, you know, like, kind of rubbed me the wrong way a little bit. For example, some of the things they said was the other institutional uses, like community centers or schools are not likely to maximize revenue generation for the college. Affordable housing would also likely not maximize revenue from the site. And the fact that the state law has specific requirements around public land being used for public benefit, things like affordable housing, you know, being used by other governmental agencies. We have a surplus property where we're able to do things like sell property to the food bank or things like that. I think it is, you know, I think, and I would have to get a better sense of, if we extend this development agreement, are we able to then work with them to be like, okay, you know, we can have additional conditions so that we can get maximum public benefit from this? Because the other thing is, you know, given all the challenges that we've had with school bonds and citing new schools, having a parcel that's like in the neighborhood of 20 acres where you could build a school, and actually, this, in the development agreement, it says if you do some kind of institutional use, you can go up to six stories. So you could have a lot of square footage for an institutional use on the site. And I think saying like, oh, well, it's too hard to do that, and so we'll just, you know, build residential, which is fine, but I, I feel like we should, you know, look into some of these other options, and maybe as part of the development agreement, we could look into those options. But also, even if we don't renew the, this residential portion of the agreement, we can look into other institutional uses because we have until 2040 to do that. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Council President, would you like to go next, or would you like me to?
I think I'm stable internet, so I'm happy to go.
Perfect.
Okay. So I have to say, I heard most of what Councilmember Jiang said, and I believe I agree with the concepts there. My, my approach to looking at development agreements, so I'll put aside the fact that this is Bellevue College, and start with just the concept of, I'm very hesitant to extend development agreements because they allow for older versions of our code to be used for future developments. And this is particularly true when there's really just a plan to create a plan, giving time instead of a potential for a certain type of development. I think we also need to consider the public benefit that was bestowed upon this land in buying it with the tax-exempt status and buying it at a lower cost. And so those are some of the things that I would start out with. Now, being that it is Bellevue College, and there is this surplus system that leans me a little bit more toward potentially doing a two-year extension, I will say, though, it is highly unlikely with even a two-year extension that they would be able to come up with an entire plan and build it within that time period. So I think this is basically guaranteeing that we not only do a two-year extension, but a potential longer extension, which is also concerning for me. I really like to think in the frame of, you know, drawbacks and benefits for the city since that is, in many cases, our decision-making there. And so recognizing that, you know, what the current zoning is of that parcel, if the development agreement were to, or the development agreement for the housing and residential portion were to expire, then we have to think about what else it could be used. In this case, it could be used for institutional. I do like the idea of approaching the school district and seeing if there are any opportunities because I think that could be a very good collaboration for an additional campus there. So overall, I, I have some concerns here about the idea of making this extension there. The other things I would say is, we just got information about how long it would take to do an emergency evacuation out of the Highlands. And so I would want to see if there is a way to help mitigate some of that with this parcel, if it was to develop. And then also, there is a known and well-used paved trail at the bottom of that parcel that I believe has gone in since the parcel was sold. And so I would want to make sure that that was able to be maintained and had access points. So lots of concerns and thoughts here, and happy to hear what everyone else has to say.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll just share some of my comments, then. I guess I'm showing up a little differently than my colleagues here. I don't share many of these concerns. I think Bellevue College provides a major benefit to the people of Issaquah, to the students of Issaquah in particular. And if we have a way to help them create this consistent cash flow, like you were saying, there's only a benefit to Issaquah residents and students that I see in terms of being able to access ongoing educational programming if, when you're in high school and beyond. So I'm seeing this as a win-win i- in my mind. I think that there are some concerns that Council President brought up about the trail, that both of you have brought up about opportunities to partner with the school district that I would certainly be interested in learning more about. But as of this point, where I sit, I think extending this by two years is a, is a modest measure, and I'm comfortable doing that. Does anyone else want to provide any kind of second-round comments on anything? Or maybe I'll go to staff and say, is there any other particular feedback that you'd like from us? Oh, let's first go to Council President Walsh again. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering if staff can comment on the concept that, you know, a development like this is very unlikely to happen in a two-year period. And so what would you see as a process of not only us potentially renewing or extending a two-year addition to this development agreement, but what we would need to do in the future? And then also, I would love to hear from the Bellevue College staff about, you know, are there concerns about only having a two-year extension if what you're hearing from some of the council members is that, you know, we, we might have some concerns about that as the future? If you take the two years to plan, but then there is not a guarantee that the development agreement extends beyond that, how do you approach the conversation at that point?
So in turn, I'll take the first question, which I think, Council President Walsh, you were asking, what, how, what would the next two years look like in terms of process? So we...
Excuse me, Director Dollywell. I, I'm less concerned about what the next two years would look like because I believe that's mostly in Bellevue College's hands. But what would it look like, what would we need to do then at the end of that two years if they're, they haven't already, you know, built, built out that parcel?
Sure. You know, the scenario that they would actually be able to get a partner to do the development, and we would get a development application is not what they have proposed at this point. They're thinking they would talk to folks, figure out what makes sense here, and then come with a proposal that then will inform the city and the community initially to give feedback on, does this work? Do you need larger buffer here? Do you need, you know, is the access here, whatever that sort of planning design looks like for the parcel, for the kind of use that they're contemplating, which is residential, according to their report, but they're not tied to that either. So it could be different uses that they would evaluate. They had an architectural firm, I think, two years ago. Bellis Architecture did some conceptual designs and, for, for the property. I would imagine that they would build up from that. But from, from the city's perspective, from the staff's perspective, I think we would look at, I mean, it's a very complex development agreement with so many terms and agreements. So we would look at, okay, in order to facilitate and collaborate with Bellevue College to get this vision that fits in with the city's goals, here's what the amendments to the DA look like. Appendix D, C, D, you know, the whole thing. We would compare it with existing codes. We would say, could this works, this doesn't work? And we would bring forth for council action on those and get your feedback and boards and commissions' feedback on it. At the end of the timeframe, what ideally would need to happen if, if we are not going to extend, if, if council decides to extend it for two years, and then before that expiration of two years, we would have a, have a proposal that's vetted out for council to vote on, which either could be, you know, more detailed thorough review of each of those development standards and how that would, you know, work or not work. And you can choose whether you want to then just establish the zoning. There's no timeframe for it, and that's, that's something that can happen. Currently, the zoning for the property is UV, which then takes you to the development agreement for standard. So we don't have an underlying zoning with standard. So come 2040, you know, if council's decision is not to extend it at this point, it, they can't do residential on it. Institutional uses can go in until 2040. So they could find a partner to do institutional use... So they could find a partner to do institutional use or, or, you know, they're obviously not interested in doing it themselves. But at the end of 2040, again, we would have to establish some zoning for the piece of property. So that, that's sort of what happens with these development agreements is we haven't established underlying zoning and development standards. When the sunset, we run into issues just like we did with shelter. So we do intend to establish some standards that would be the underlying and this could be an overlay of a development agreement on top of that. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's sort of what we think the process would play out. And then you had a second question for the applicant?
Yeah. Do you feel comfortable coming up and, yeah, just right here? Thank you.
Well, I have to echo what Minnie just said and it, this is a plan so we can plan. You know, it's, it's kind of a phase, a two-year plan. So we can plan for something and we would come back in before the, the extension expires with a plan. So we need two years to develop a plan. That's what we're coming for. And I appreciate everything everybody said. It's learning experience for me. And what Chair Hall mentioned, it's true. We are looking for ways to keep the lights on, just like most other state entities. We have taken a cut in our budget and we're looking to supplement that any way we can to, to keep our services going for students in this area. But that's exactly what we're trying to do. It's just, it's, this is a plan so we can plan. Just, that's all it is at this point.
Any other comments or questions by committee? Thank you for that. Maybe I'll go to staff then. Do you feel like you have good direction or feedback from us or do you need us to chat about anything more?
I, I think we just need to know is this, should we put it on the agenda for council on the 21st? And then I think the recommendation from the committee would be what all you decide for full council to weigh in on. Or do you want more information for us to come back to you? You know, we're open to what, what makes sense for you all.
That's a good question. Let's start there. Are there any, is there any desire by the committee to hold on to this and get some questions answered first? Or would we be comfortable perhaps putting this on regular business since we have some points of nuance in this discussion? So that way the full council can have a discussion about it? Any thoughts? Yeah, go ahead, Council President.
Yeah, I'm trying to think through. I don't think there are any additional questions or information that I would need other than, you know, if the Isicaw School District had a conversation and was very interested, that might change some of my perspectives on this. I think probably going to council on regular business and being able to have the conversation about what a two-year extension looks like is probably the next step because I can't think of any other information that I think would bring the committee together on a particular point.
All right. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I agree. I think it probably needs to go to regular business because we have disagreements within the committee. And I think, you know, it'll be good to hear different perspectives as well, including from some folks, other council members who have been here since the beginning.
Then would the committee be comfortable moving forward with the recommendation to extend the two years? So that be the recommendation for council? And then I can be sure to report out on our discussion and then we can have the full discussion up on the dais. I couldn't quite tease out exactly if the two of you were in favor or outright not in favor of the extension or not. So perhaps maybe that would help me out a little bit more in terms of how we want this to show up on regular business. Council President, let's start with you.
Yeah, I don't, I think of a development agreement as something that provides mutual benefit. And at this point, I am hesitant to see the mutual benefit coming through on extending this. I agree. Bellevue College, fantastic. I'm thinking about what the, what the impact is of developing on an older code model or of developing in an area or, you know, based on purchasing this land with that public benefit in hand. So I, I don't know, I just haven't been convinced that extending the development agreement is to the city's best interest, perhaps is the best way to say it.
Yeah, I would agree with what Council President said. I think also it's not totally clear to me. I mean, like if we don't extend this right now, does it essentially mean there's going to be no residential development possible at all until after 2040?
Yes, until, unless the council agrees to amend the DA to allow residential. So it's allowed right now until the end of this year. But in 2026, there would be no residential allowed under the, under the development agreement. So that's basically what the extension provides is that additional opportunity to explore residential in the mix for the applicant and the city.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, real quickly in terms of the code comparison. So part of the resolution that's in front of you, the applicant has committed to compliance with critical area codes and stormwater regulations that those are the mostly the state mandated, the two of those, that we shouldn't, you know, give extensions on. So I think that's, that's how the, that exhibit to the resolution is worded. So you can look at amending or adding more to it if you want to add additional caveats. That may be another option for council to debate.
Thanks for letting me come back up. So, yeah, we are committed to whatever the current codes would be and not grandfathered in codes from the past. But I, I guess I'm confused in why this is, an extension is, is a big deal in that we're, we're not going to develop anything at this time. And so within that two years, we would come back and say, here's what we want to do. And at that time, you'd have a real definitive plan that you could vote down or approve. And so at this time, I, I think you're, I could be wrong, but I think you're not wanting to approve something that's not even existent, really. We're just coming, we want to come back in a couple of years and say, here's the plan. So, yeah.
Councilmember Jiang? And then Council President.
Can I ask a question? So given that we've had this development agreement in place for what, like 13, 14 years, why is it only now that you're planning to make a plan when you've had this for that? Is it just because, you know, with the state budget cuts, you're kind of in the situation where you're looking for additional source of income?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I would, I don't have the exact number, but at least six presidents have gone, come and gone in that time. Focus hasn't been there. Dr. May, the current president, has been there for two years, has a three-year contract. I just got there and my position has changed over probably five times in the last three years, four years. So it's just, we're really coming to the table brand new as far as this administration and, and what we would do. And, and I want to address what you said about the, the report and I agree. When we hired Emerald Initiatives to do our report, you know, they're looking to dazzle us with the amount of money that we can make because maybe we'll use them to develop that land. But our goal is to be a community partner and we're, like I said, we're not a for-profit business that is looking to make maximum dollars. We'd like to make money on it, but if we want, also want to be good partners with the community. That's what we are at, at the college and so we understand what that is. All of us are public servants and we're looking to serve the public.
Thank you. Council President, back to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make it clear, I, I am not opposed to housing here. I'm not opposed to housing options that provide, you know, areas that people can live in. I think my concern is a development agreement creates a set of standards that are specific to a development and sometimes provide additional benefits for, you know, a negotiation that is happening. So my concern is more on extending a development agreement rather than going at the approach of just changing the underlying zoning of this. And maybe Director Dollywell, you can talk through what are the pros and cons for the city if we were to change the underlying zoning versus a development agreement?
Yeah, the current development agreement term for institutional uses goes till 2040. So, you know, that, that is going to stay. The, the part about establishing a zoning, it will still, at this point, will still require an amendment to the DA because of the, you know, so, so there are a couple of things. There's the, the use allowed and the density allowed. So that's residential and at what, how many units per acre is sort of the entitlement, part of the development agreement piece. The others are development standards. There's also things, the public benefit through this whole washed out agreement was preservation of a lot of green space, all the infrastructure, the roads that were put in place, you know, not the interior roads, but the rest of the infrastructure that happened as part of this are the back, are, there are a lot of terms. It's a complex development agreement that, that has those benefits. You know, water lines, sewer lines, things of that nature that are part of this whole package, the impact fees and things of that nature that, that won't apply because of the development agreement because of those infrastructure improvements were already made. So that's what happened back in 2011 that established some of those goals and, and benefits to the city. And that was where the negotiations between give and take that happened, preservation of open space was the biggest one in this particular development agreement. 144 acres were preserved with the idea. I mean, this area was not even in the urban growth boundary at that time. So, so the, the idea that you would preserve the space, that you would expand the urban growth boundary to include this area with the, with the benefit of preserving larger green spaces and getting more denser development here. That's sort of the framework also that we shouldn't forget. I mean, that's sort of set the 2011 development agreement. But if council chooses to not have, you know, issues with the, with the housing going on this property, then perhaps the, the right thing would be to, to give two years to see how, what kind of housing, how it would play out. And then in that meantime, we can do our homework of comparing the, all the standards to the existing code standards and bring forward a package that actually makes sense of here's the final, you know, and then I think that the other part, whether it's a DA amendment at the end of two years or, or zoning, that, that's just a process and a framework. We can go either way. It's just the DA is more, has a sunset, the development agreements are the way we've kind of doing it. And then it's easy to administer, you don't have to go to a different sets of rules. But, but again, there may be some terms, not development standards, but there may be some terms that do get carried forward, like what kind of infrastructure, water line, sewer line, you know, those kinds of things that may make sense to carry forward because those investments were made originally. Now, we, we can be more thorough in our comparison with existing code and the development standards in the DA. But, but the basic thing that you would be if council chooses to extend it is would allow residential, 310 ERUs, equivalent residential units at a density of three to 12 dwelling units per acre. That's the piece that I think gets them evaluating housing at this, on this property or not, depending on your final decision.
Council President, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah. No, I think Director Dollywell, a lot of what you have said was new, not necessarily new information, but a new way of thinking about it. So the fact that there has been investment, not only on the property, but other areas to support the land that was preserved, does make me a little bit more open to the idea of extending a development agreement because we've already received some of that public benefit. And so I think that as a reason to trade, you know, an agreement rather than just sticking with the potential new zoning underlay, yeah, that definitely makes me more comfortable with it. So I think I am probably more comfortable with the idea of recommending this to council if we do have a conversation on regular business.
Councilmember Jiang?
I guess so, kind of my thought with this on the public benefit as well is, you know, this whole concept with publicly owned land, that it is really hard to surplus it for things that are not affordable housing. And I would love to see, you know, as, if we give this extension as part of that analysis, I would love to see analysis of both market rate and affordable housing, just so that we're able to see both. Because I think, you know, if it's like, oh, it's either we're going to develop this market rate housing or nothing. I mean, I, I would like to see a few different options and I would also really like to see, you know, conversations with the school district because again, you know, the school district, like their whole thing is that they do not, there are not sites that are large enough to build a school within the urban growth boundary in the Isicaw School District. And so, you know, having a single owner for a 19-acre site is something that is so rare that I think we really need to, you know, try to pursue that to the extent possible. And then if they're truly like, no, we're not interested in being able to build a six-story school in this parcel because we have this development agreement that allows this, you know, concession for having a public institution, then okay. But I, I would like, you know, if we're giving this extension, I would like us to explore all those different options. And I think, again, I think this whole concept of, you know, we're just extending it so that we can look in, we have more time to look into the different options. I'm mostly okay with that. But I think I, you know, when this comes back, I think we're going to have to have a bunch of different options that we look at, not just, you know, market rate housing with a ground lease because it's too difficult to sell public, publicly owned land to market rate developer or whatever.
Sure. Yeah, Bellevue College has indicated, you know, Hore is, he's indicated that they're open to any suggestion. So that may be feedback that they can take back to look at affordable housing. Part of the development agreement that established these equivalent residential units is also 50 units will have to be built as affordable units. So I can look into the development that already happened, whether that has happened in those three parcels. If not, then at least 50 of those, 200 units on this property would have to be affordable under the development, current terms of the development agreement. There was a link of, you know, minimum 50 units have to be affordable.
All right. So I'm starting to get a sense that we are comfortable moving this forward to a regular business at the next council meeting. I will re-watch this conversation and provide a summary for our council members and then ask if either of you two want to jump in if I missed anything. And then we can have a full and substantive conversation up on the dais for council. That sound like a good plan? All right, cool. That's our feedback. Thank you. Anything else from the administration?
Nope.
Okay. Then thank you very much for being with us and we'll move on to the next item of our agenda, which is COM 0156, impact and mitigation fee update. And Dr. Dollywell, I'm assuming it's back to you again. We'll give you just a minute to pull up the slides though.
So this other item is impact and mitigation fee update. So what we're seeking tonight from council committee is approval for scaling the city's adopted impact and mitigation fees based on residential unit size. And this is really coming from compliance required per Senate Bill 5258. So a little bit of background about what are impact fees? Are one-time charges that any local entity, government can... Are one-time charges that any local entity, government can levy against new development project to help pay for new or expanded public capital facilities. That will directly address the increased demand for services created by that development. That's the state law. So Isaguas currently has adopted traffic, schools, parks, and fire impact fees. Police and general government buildings and bicycle facilities are called mitigation fees. There's a slight difference between impact and mitigation fees. So mitigation fees only apply to projects that go through State Environmental Policy Act. So there's a minimum threshold, so smaller projects don't have, don't have to comply with that, but anytime you need a CIPA determination, that's when the mitigation fees come into play. So recent state law requirements, Senate Bill 5258 requires that impact fee reflect the proportionate impact of new housing units, multifamily condo units based on one of these three, square footage, number of bedrooms, or trips generated. There's also another House Bill, 1337, that limits local governments from establishing impact fees on accessory dwelling units to be no more than 50% of what we charge for the main house. And what's the purpose of these, you know, from the state legislator's standpoint was to not have a flat per unit basis, saying, you know, the idea being the smaller home, thousand square foot home should pay less than a larger home, 2,500 square foot should pay more. Isaguas currently levies a flat rate, unit rate, but we have different rates for single family versus multifamily. So, but this new legislation requires that impact fees for smaller housing units be aligned with their impacts generally to incentivize the construction of broader range of housing types, contributing to the overall goal of increasing housing supply and affordability in the state. So how does this methodology to scale work for what's in front of you? Our average square footage of the dwelling unit, this is the blended unit from single family and multifamily, is 1925 square feet. And based on the census data and other data, the occupants per average dwelling unit are in our city are 2.27. So taking these two numbers help determine the fee per square foot for each type of impact fee. So we use the base fees that we currently have, multifamily and single family, the blended rate, and then established based on these metrics, what does it mean per square foot? You know, then there are bookends, the minimum fee and the maximum fee, because any unit over, less than 850 square feet will still have one, you know, occupant. So that's how it scales, that anything below 850 still will have one occupant, even the size of the unit may get smaller, but it's, the impacts are related to the number of occupants, the trips and the usage and all that. And on the upper end, they consulted a regression analysis and established 3,500 becomes the top point at which the impacts flatten out because of the number of occupants remain stable after, you know, for a house that's larger than 3,500 square feet.
I'm going to jump in real quick. Council President Walsh, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Going back to the other slide, when you talk about the mixed or blended size of homes, are you basing it on all of the homes in the city and not just what has recently been built?
That's correct.
Okay. So our impact fees are only for things that are newly built? And so I wonder, you know, if we're looking at it, the report said that multifamily home sizes are closer to 1,000 square feet rather than the 1925 square feet average here. So I wonder, does this represent what is actually being built now as an average size? Or is it indexed more toward what was previously built before we saw much more multifamily?
Well, I think there are two things going on. So the original fees establishment that happened in the 2019 study, that looked at all the stuff that's in place, what kind of infrastructure, you know, for instance, for transportation, what is, what kind of growth is planned for, what is coming away, and how much is it per dwelling unit size? And so they established a different rate for single family versus a multifamily. There was a difference between those two. But with the state law, that's not, you know, we have to do it by the unit size. And so that's where I think that this approach, one size fits all from the state standpoint, kind of creates those kind of push and pull situations. But if we, you know, we still do get single family home construction. I mean, we have some plats that are coming away. Some of our townhomes, you know, I went down the soul of like what's in our pipeline and what's the average square footage, and they're about 2,200 to 2,500 square foot, even the townhomes that are in the pipeline. So they're not 1,000 square feet multifamily units that are currently in our pipeline, which is about 200 units and that we currently are either looking and reviewing those. So, but I think in terms of, if we were to use the average square footage of the dwelling unit, be 1,000 square feet, just focusing on the multifamily, then the data will not, you know, then what happens with the larger units is that they would get even larger break. And the multifamily, so the city's not going to be able to fully mitigate, you know, result, mitigate all the impacts for traffic, for instance, because we've artificially scaled it based on just the new, just the 1,000 square feet versus the average. Yeah, yeah, but good, you know, I had the same kind of questions about if, what if, this and then, sort of a scenario over here. We currently do not have good data for multifamily unit sizes, that, you know, all of the unit sizes in the city, because historically we haven't collected. We would have to go to each apartment building, figure out what's the unit size of each one of those. But the consultant looked at rentcafe, and that's how they dot com, and they came up with the average for a multifamily being 1,000, and, you know, for a single family, we do collect the data for single family because that's a square footage that we collect for permitting. But when you have 100 unit complex, there's a mix of unit types, and without going in, looking into each one of them, maybe we want to consider collecting that data for the future so that we can, you know, have some of those data points. But at this moment, we did not, and in order to come into compliance, that's the best to consider the multifamily average and the single family average and then blend those two.
So that was going to be my follow-up question. Do you think that would be helpful data for us to start collecting, or maybe something to chew on?
I think it's always good. The more data we collect is always good. So we can certainly, you know, moving forward, start collecting that for new projects that come in.
Okay. Council President Walsh, any follow-up questions or any questions here? All right, feel free to keep going.
So again, here, the top two rows are single family and multifamily. The way we currently have it structured, the bottom row is per square foot rates with a minimum and a maximum benchmark. So what does, what do all these numbers mean? As I, we gave you some scenarios and samples of, so for transportation impact fees, we currently have 11,000 for single family and about 5,600 for multifamily. And the proposal is 4.43 per square foot with a minimum of 3,700 and maximum is 15,000. So then we showed you the proposed and the current. So if someone wants to build an 800 square foot multifamily home, that'll just the minimum impact fee of 3,700 versus what they would pay under the existing established rates, which is 5,600. So much lower fees for smaller units. 1,500 square foot multifamily home, they would pay slightly more than ours, but I think the intended policy from the state was to encourage smaller unit size. So it, you know, it meets that policy objective. For single family, 1,500 square foot single family home would pay substantially lower fees than what they would pay currently, 11,000 versus 6,600. A much larger home, 4,000 square foot single family home, for instance, the fees would go up from 11,000 to 1,500. Again, if the policy objective is to have an incentive for smaller units, it does meet that objective. And then we did some other analysis to see at what point does it tip? So anything under 1,300 square feet would pay less, but anything over 1,300 square foot would pay slightly more on a sliding scale for, that's for multifamily. For a single family, 2,500 square foot is the tipping point. So below 2,500, you would pay less, over 2,500, you would pay more. That was for transportation impact fees. And then we have park impact fees. These two are the biggest impact fees that we have currently adopted, and it's related to really the deficit and needed to bring some of these, you know, traffic issues in line and the impact to parks need to be mitigated. So for parks, 800 square foot unit would pay 3,900 versus 6,700, much lower. 1,500, kind of closed, slightly $200 more or something like that. Single family, 1,500 square foot, much lower, 4,000, you know, higher. Again, the tipping point here is 1,450 square feet. Below that, you get a positive result, you know, you pay less for multifamily, and 2,350, you pay, smaller units than 2,350 pay less. Fire impact fees, now our current methodology for these is again, single family and multifamily. The impacts to fire are based on the needs, the facilities that we have, and so that, those original rates were established under the original study. This is just providing a sliding scale to those. So again, these, these impact fees have to be related to the direct impact from the new development. So these are not meant to, you know, provide deficit for existing infrastructure and all that kind of stuff. So in this case, 800 square foot is much lower. Fire impact fees, 1,500 square foot, much lower for both multifamily and single family. And 4,000 square foot, you would pay more. The benchmark shifts a little bit, so here the 2,000 square foot becomes a tipping point more or so. And the impacts to, from a financial policy and community input, you know, obviously the policy objective to make more affordable to build smaller homes is demonstrated here. The previous conversation with council when we did the middle housing was to not charge any impact fees for accessory dwelling units, that's the incentive. We did not, we're not proposing any changes to that policy because we recently discussed with you all, which goes above and beyond the House Bill 1337 requirements. We could charge 50%, but we're not charging anything for accessory dwelling units. The proposed scaling, again, like I said, there are different benchmarks, but overall that's where we land. Most of the residential development in the pipeline, townhomes, they, you know, there are few that are in the 1,800 range, but majority of them are 2,200 to 2,500 square feet. So that's sort of what's in the mix or in the pipeline that will be paying these fees. So administration recommends adopting these proposed impact fees based on residential unit size. Again, this is all to comply with the new state laws. And the next steps would be, depending on your decision tonight, we can put it on consent agenda for July 21st, and we'll bring forward an ordinance for adoption on the consent agenda if you agree. That's it.
Great, thank you. It seems like everything is convalescing on that 21st meeting.
Yes.
Questions?
It's going to be a busy meeting, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's going to be a busy meeting. Questions from council, from the committee? Council President, go ahead.
Thank you. Director Dollywell, can you talk about the minimum maximum thresholds? Is that something that is required by the state? What benefit does it provide to us? And is it not basically just a regressive fee to have a maximum threshold that means that larger developments wouldn't necessarily pay as much as they scale larger?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, you know, the state law is very minimalist in terms of, it just says, base it on these three things, and that's all it goes into. The guidance from Department of Commerce is upcoming. They haven't, you know, they published a draft guidance that doesn't get into this at all in April. The deadline for us to adopt this is June 30th, so we're kind of all scrambling to kind of get this in front of you. So we don't have full published guidance from Commerce at this point on this topic. However, if we, if we kept the sliding scale ongoing, then I think we could get debates from someone that, you know, how come I want to build this larger home? And we have some really large homes in Isaguas too, that how, we have, this is not a tax, it's a fee for an impact. And so how we would, you know, we could get questioned about how are you, how is this an impact from the larger home? So I think that, so from, from that perspective, it's based on the occupants, and the occupants flatten out. So if in the report, they include, you know, or in the spreadsheet, they give us some graphs that show, you know, here's there, and then you can have half of an occupant, so the lower is based on the one occupant, and then the upper one is just based on, at that point, you know, there may be a few more occupants here or there, but the average just sort of establishes that maximum threshold. But we don't have to, we don't have to put the maximum, and it could keep on sliding at 4.43 regardless. If you bring the 10,000 square foot, you're going to have a much larger fee. However, if we will get questioned about how is it an impact, you know, because the numbers could get really big.
Interesting, thank you. Council President, anything else from you? Okay, a couple questions, unless you had any. A couple of questions that are just on my mind, you know, other, I mean, like, well, actually, first of all, Commerce doesn't have full published guidance, and this is due, like the homework's due soon, like, what is this? Due two weeks ago, what is? All right, anyways, I'll leave that aside. So other cities are doing this too. So I'm just curious, is it common to use the kind of scaling fees based on the size of development unit, or are other cities kind of using different, because there are a couple of different options or paths you could take for this?
The ones that I've seen are mostly the unit size. You know, this is one consultant who's also going around and scrambling to get everyone some of the analysis and data and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, good point, okay. And then my other question would be, all right, so we adopt this, we have our new impact and mitigation fee schedule. Have we thought at all about how square footage per unit should change over time, when we should reevaluate rates? Like, what does the process look like in the future, do you think?
Sure. So, you know, we always look at the, there's cost of living expense increases happen on an annual basis. There's a special one for impact fees because they're not really your CPI index that we use for other fees. This is more an engineering news and construction cost index, which is slightly different than your consumer price index benchmark, that that's how impact fees are, you know, based off of that. So we look at that rate, and we've been bringing this to you on an annual basis. So, but we would monitor, you know, we will collect all the data for how much did we get, you know, was there a negative impact to our budget, and what are those needs for transportation, for instance, or improvements or anything that we need to fill the gap, or did we do okay and, you know, met our benchmark? Our original analysis thinks that it's probably going to be okay, but we'll monitor all of that. The other strings with these impact fees are cities can have to spend it within 10 years or return it with interest to the applicant. So, you know, there's a lot of accounting piece that goes with the impact fees, but we'll bring back all, any information councils interested in. But we do plan to bring this on an annual basis as part of our fee update.
Right.
Then the larger overall fee update study, if that, that could come in as a budget request for next budget cycle, because we did it in 2019, so we could do a full-on, you know, what are?
Would that be helpful?
I think we should do it at some point because we did it in 2006, 2007. I think we should do it at some point because we did it in 2006, 2008, and then didn't do anything till 2019.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's a good idea to keep that long of a timeframe, but we did it in 2019. I think with the next budget cycle, that will be at least a $200,000 budget ask if, as part of a budget process to do that comprehensively.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from committee? Yeah, Councilwoman Jane.
So are the other cities that are doing this sliding scale on square footage, do they also have the minimum and maximum square footages? And I'm curious if theirs are, their thresholds are different or the same compared to us?
You know, I posed that question to the, the planning directors. I mean, I asked how are other people doing this impact fees to the planning directors' group, but we plan to have more collected data. I think at this point, everyone's trying to get, get it done, so I can't say for sure yes and no, but we, we will, we're going to continue to monitor that. Some may not, you know, they may have just chosen not to do that. Probably a mix is my guess.
All right. I think then that is council questions. So thank you. We'll now open up public comment again on this item. Has anyone joined us virtually?
No, sure.
No. Would you like to provide public comment? Okay. Once again, if you have any thoughts on this item before it comes back to us at council, you, you of course can email us at citicouncil@isquawal.gov, and we would love your feedback on that. So then now we'll move into direction needed by council. Are we happy with the new fee structure that's been established here in order to come into compliance with state law? So who would like to get us started? Councilwoman Jane, go ahead.
I mean, I think this is a reasonable approach. I do want to echo the point about, you know, if the goal is to incentivize smaller housing units, this also has the kind of flip side of incentivizing things larger than 3,500 square feet, because past that point, you are not paying additional fees. I do, I do want to note that, but also I think given that the purpose of this is to mitigate the impact of, you know, new occupants on city infrastructure and whatever, I think it's, you know, the way that it is now is fine. But I would like to see what the final guidance from Commerce is in terms of the minimums and maximums, as well as what other cities are doing. Because, you know, we're doing this right now to get in compliance, we could revisit this as, at a later date to see, you know, to see if there's a way that we can make it more equitable and further incentivize, you know, smaller units, starter homes, those types of things.
Well said. Council President, you're up.
Plus one. Those were my concerns of having a minimum and a maximum size, and so I would be willing to revisit this. But generally, I mean, first of all, kudos to the state for coming up with this idea and recognizing that a goal of having smaller homes and starter homes really needs to be not disincentivized by fee structures. And so having an opportunity to make this change and make this change across all of the cities is a really good way of approaching it. So I'm thumbs up on this. I'd love to see more when we know what other cities are doing and what the direction is from Department of Commerce.
Just for me, I feel the exact same way. I would be interested too if the administration is considering what would kind of a comprehensive review look like, and really when is the right time to do that? I think that would be worth having a discussion about, not here, but as the administration. And then, of course, just interested in, in being able to monitor the ongoing financial impact to the city that this might have, and just being able to be nimble as needed. So I'm comfortable moving this forward. Committee, do we have any strong preferences on regular business versus consent? I'm thinking consent, maybe? Unless we hit, unless we get the final guidance from Commerce like before the 21st, which I don't think will happen. Yeah, you're good with that? All right, so this one, consent. Does the administration need anything else? No? Okay. Thank you, Director Dollywall. Appreciate that for being on call for both of these items. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is announcements, any announcements by the committee? Or anyone on staff? Any announcements you'd like to make? All right, then, we are taking as a committee August off, and our next meeting is scheduled for September 9th. And the preliminary agenda includes COM 0109, the Title 18 tree code update we've all been eagerly anticipating, so this will be good. And there being no further business, we are adjourned at 7:45 PM. See you, Lindsay.